Roll call.
Chisel.
Here.
Neal. Carlson.
Here.
Luce.
Here.
Zittagrun.
Here.
Hadley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Okay, Wanda, you were going to introduce Renee?
I will. Renee, would you stand up? Okay, so this is Renee Hill. She is our new administrative assistant in our office. So, yes. She is responsible for payroll.
Yeah.
And she is Greg's new right hand. And so she's working real hard on trying to get up to speed with all that that entails with P and Z and Board of Adjustment and our new building code. And then she'll be also be working and helping a lot with our records retention. And so, welcome. Thanks for being here. All right.
I'm going to do it just a little bit different as far as public comment is concerned because I believe there's people that want to speak to the pickup spots in the parking. I believe that that's, some people want to speak to that. And then we also have, I think, people outside that want to speak to the mask. Emily, do you know how many are out there?
No, I'm in on mine. I didn't.
Okay, and they would be on that line. So.
And I was speaking at something.
Okay. So, the first people that I'd like to speak deal with the parking downtown. You want to come up? We still have the mask mandate going too, but come up and speak.
My name's Joe Hamel.
Okay.
My address is 108 West Water Street in Decora, and I own Hamel Jewelers. In regards to the parking downtown, I think that with this extra parking you're putting in front of these restaurants, Donlands, these other places that have parking spots that are being used for, so people can sit down and have a cup of coffee. I've been in town now, it'll be 25 years in July, and the first meeting I ever went to with the retail, and many since then, has to do with, we don't have enough parking. People are asking, we don't have enough parking. But yet, we have enough to set a couple of tables out, you know, so people can sit in the street and eat and drink. That isn't right. I've got people that come in the store that are elderly, and it's not just my store. But they come in and they don't have a place to park. They have to walk several blocks or whatever it is to do their business downtown. And Decora's a busy city. There's a lot of people that come to Decora, they look for parking, and to be very honest, if these businesses want to put tables out, let them put in the back of the store in the alley. Save the parking spots for people that are going to come to town and do business with merchants. I just think that, like I said, for 25 years, it's been, we don't have parking, we don't have parking. That's a wonderful thing to have. And I just think that there's better ways to utilize the space than sticking a couple of tables on it. We've given the businesses three feet in front, I think it's three feet, in front of their business to put a table and chairs or whatever they want to do. You have the hotel, you've got the co-op, you've got the bars, then they can set tables out three feet. But I don't think we need to give them the street. So I just think that if this passes or whatever, I think it needs to be done away with for everybody.
We will be working and discussing that. I appreciate you coming forth and giving us your opinion, and I think there's some other people that would have opinions that are online as well, but thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone, is there anybody that is on Zoom that wishes to speak? Okay. So then what I will do is I'll move to the next topic. Is there anybody who wishes to speak about the mask mandate that we will be discussing? Is there anybody online that wishes to speak to that? And if you are, unmute yourself and say so. I should say that, say it that way.
All right.
Okay, and we didn't, there wasn't anybody outside?
I was only, no, I was only saying it's basically never.
Okay, that's okay. Okay. That being said, is there anything else to come before the council of anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go on with the consent agenda.
Item A, minutes of the May 3, 2021 meeting. Item B, claims. Item C, resolution 3194, accepting Ridge Road improvements, Phase 2 Upper Ridge Road as complete and authorizing release of retainage. Item D, renewal Class B beer permit for Toppling Goliath, including outdoor service area and Sunday sales privileges. Item E, renewal Class B beer permit for Puppet Rock Brewery, including outdoor service area and Sunday sales privileges. Item F, renewal Class C beer permit for Quick Star on Short Street, including Class B wine and Sunday sales privileges. Item G, renewal Class C beer for Quick Star, Montgomery Street, including Class B wine and Sunday sales privileges. Item 8, resolutions 3190, accepting Quarry Street improvements as complete and authorizing release of retainage. Item I, request to reserve 15 to 20 parking spaces at the west end of North Alley for the Mustang Club, Friday, May 21, 2021, 4 to 6 p.m. Item J, resolution 3192, setting June 7 at 5:45 p.m. as the date and time for a public hearing for rezoning request at 1506 Laurel Drive from A1 Agriculture to R2 Single to Four Family Residential. Item K, resolution 3193, setting June 21 at 5:45 p.m. as the date and time for a public hearing to amend chapter 1504 C3 Design Criteria, signed permit approval. Item L, resolution 3173, rejecting all bids for the 2021 Ice Cave Steps Project. Item M, resolution 3187, setting June 21, 5:45 p.m. as the date and time for a public hearing for driveway easement with Three Chicks Rentals LLC. Item N, approve utility easement with Three Chicks Rentals LLC. Item O, approve flood control project maintenance easement with Three Chicks Rental LLC. And item P, approve a C3 Design application for mural at Bresterheim Museum, 520 West Water Street. I ran out of alphabet.
Good job reading.
Move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Add a motion by Chisel, second by Luce for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Okay. Conduct a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 21 budget amendment. Do you, would you like to give something before I open the public hearing on that?
Yep, if you just give me a second to get to all my paperwork here. Okay, I will just quickly go through the main components of your, of the amendment. In public safety, there was $45,000 for that hybrid police cruiser. We had to replace the drone for $20,000. We did get an insurance reimbursement for that. There were legal expenses for $9,000 and a 20, the 2019 flood. We finally finished that up and we've gotten our final reimbursements for that, but that was another $14,000. Public Works Engineering, we're amending for $30,000. We have some equipment repairs in the street department for $25,000. We have the airport driveway rehab at $170,000. But if memory serves, I think that was a project that, rather than 90/10, is that 100%? So, when that ends up, and that's mostly paid, it just hasn't quite been final yet, but when it is, we'll get those final reimbursements in. And then the airport plow truck and more, again, there was a $30,000 grant for that through that CARES Act, which is paid at 100%. Culture and Recreation, the East Main Street Park, we're projecting maybe $100,000 will be spent by the end of the year. Most of that, it's all covered by donations. Now we'll see, maybe that won't happen yet this year, but it's in here just in case. And the campground, we're amending for $31,000. That's basically the increased usage at the campground, but then there was also offsetting revenue for that. Community betterment and economic development, paying out, well, I amended for 107.5 because that's what we thought it was going to be. It ended up being 117 for the Fox and Coon Club, but we amended for 107.5, which is what we thought it was going to be. And then the general government was $50,000 for the Maple Street House, purchase of that and then the demo fees. Some of that will come back in grants. Debt service, $165,315 there. That's a capitalized interest on the Locust Road bonds that was borrowed as part of that bond project, but of course, we didn't know what that was going to be when the budget was done. And then capital improvements, we've got $450,000, we're anticipating for East Main Street. Again, we got that DOT reimbursement of $1 million. 500 for Onio to Bridge. I don't know if that might be on your amendment again next year, it was on the amendment last year. That project's being very slow being finalized. And then 102,200 for the Pole Line Road Bridge. And your enterprise funds, we've got $35,000 at the wastewater treatment plant for our whole study that's been happening out there. $55,000 for the air handling unit that had to be replaced. And then 173,000 for Metronet undergrounding, undergrounding those lines, which is coming back, of course, through reimbursements and cash on hand in that fund. But that's kind of the highlights of your amendment.
Can you? Not our money.
I gotta open the public hearing for.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. I'll open the public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak on this fiscal 21 budget amendment. Is there anybody in house? Don't see anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak? I don't see anybody there. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and then it's resolution 3191 approving the proposed fiscal year budget amendment.
And I was just going to ask, and you might not be able to, but I know when I first started this process, and I'm actually saying this for the public as well, that if you were to just say, the city council's amending their budget for, you know, this many hundreds of thousands of dollars, we haven't budgeted well. But it's how we do our budget, and Chad always made a statement about, this is how we do our budget.
Right.
When we plan our budget, we don't, it's not that we don't have money in accounts for these issues, we just like to publicly make aware of what it is we're spending money on. And I do think that it'd be good just for the public to understand that this isn't an overspending by the city by any means. This is just how we then, at the end of the year, reconcile the money that we sort of put away, knowing these things would come up.
Right. So some of these things are cash on hand.
Right.
But for the lion's share of it, there's reimbursements coming back in and revenue coming back in, so our total revenue amendment is $2,101,000. Our total expenditures were $2,315. Yes, some of that is cash on hand, but then we have those dollars in our fund balance for those emergencies that come up because they do, and this happens in every single city across the state. It's not just an anomaly for Decora. It happens in every single city.
I just want, I always like the public to, just always like to make that statement as opposed to.
And that's fine, yeah, because there's a lot of things when we do, did this budget 18 months ago, that we didn't know was going to happen today.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you for presenting that and pulling together.
Probably more information than you wanted.
All the needs. Okay, I'm looking for.
I'd move to approve resolution 3191, approving the proposed budget amendment.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chisel, second by Zittagrun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Chisel. Zittagrun.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Very good. Number seven, consider revoking curbside pickup spot privileges. Wanda, you want to give some background on that, please?
Okay, you voted on this last time, and it was a tie vote. Councilperson Luce asked it to be brought back and put on the agenda again tonight, so I don't know if he has anything he would like to add to that.
Just that in terms of considering and thinking about, and also having given the public a couple of weeks to recognize this may be an issue, that I wanted to bring it back up so we could indeed take this restrictions of parking away from downtown.
Yeah, I continue to be in support of revoking these reserved spots, which I don't think we ever actually gave privileges for, but it just kind of happened and we let it happen because of, for good reasons during the pandemic. Maybe we gave privilege, I don't know, but I think it's, I think it's time, I think, especially given that the council has decided to experiment with these parklets, it'd be good to unrestrict as many downtown parking spots as possible. And finally, you know, just again, the most efficient use of a downtown parking spot that we decide should be a parking spot is unrestricted. That tends to result in the best traffic flow, so I think it's time to do it.
Does this, will this also then take away, I know Donlin has three, one has been there, was there before, pre-pandemic.
Wanda just told me they'll keep the one.
Yeah, that's who we talked about the last time, they'll keep the one. That was approved four years ago, four, five years ago. I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate taking that one away.
And has there been any discussion with the co-op for curbside pickup at a ti, like a time, like Tuesdays from blank to blank? I'm just thinking about the businesses that are most impacted and.
I think the co-op, given that they have a parking lot right there, could preserve some spots pretty close to the door in the parking lot.
Sure, sure, sure.
I mean, I just looking, I was just trying to think through everyone who's using it.
Yep, that's, yep.
It seems like there's alley access for everyone or some other creative way that doesn't require reserving spots downtown.
Okay.
So there has been, we did talk about a listing of who that, who they would be, and you'd be sending out notifications to them, correct?
I couldn't understand you, lady.
I said, we had talked about who you need to notify that they no longer can use those.
Yeah, and we will do that.
Okay.
If this happens tonight, we will certainly do that.
Just a note to Steve's comment regarding the co-op, po, parking lot. I believe that all of those spaces are public, publicly owned spaces by the city.
Yeah, they are, it's the city's lot.
Thanks, thanks for the correction. Appreciate it. I guess I was wrong there.
They couldn't do that either.
Not without permission.
It would be very easy, though, if they wanted to use the back where it's flat, where they have their deliveries, because I think we already have that blocked off for deliveries.
And I mean, and you could also call the co-op and say, hey, I'm, you know, parked in a blue car, you know, and they'll, our businesses are creative and adaptable. They've proven that this year, and I bet they'll prove it again if we take away this option.
So I would move that we rescind these pickup parking spot privileges.
Motion made by Luce to rescind, second by Chisel. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call.
Luce.
Aye.
Chisel. Zittagrun.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Okay. Consider approval of proposed fiscal year 21 and 22 Sustainability Commission budget. I want to remind the council that their request was for the Sustainability Commission to come forth with a, an approximate budget that they think that they could be spending so that this council would have some kind of an idea, and also the fact that whatever they do want to spend, they need to come forth and ask for the funding.
Just as someone who's working with the Sustainability Commission, I do want to say, I think they, they were, they welcomed the task, but they also felt a little trepidation in knowing that they didn't know what was planning ahead. So I know that they already have met with city staff, talking about communications. So within the communication aspect of the sustainability plan, there is this sort of idea behind a community, a building, a communications plan and sending out an RFP, probably getting a grant, again, thinking about grant matches, and I think that was their biggest concern, that they can't foresee every grant that might come across their table. And so just knowing that some grants require a $10,000 match, so they didn't want to put in a huge communication budget, but that is one area where I know they've already begun to look for a grant and thinking about an RFP for that.
Well, and I think too, being it's the first year that we're all kind of working through some of the things, that things will be able to be a little clearer towards the end, especially when we're talking about budget session and stuff.
I do really appreciate their, the commission's work on supporting childcare and, and social sustainability for affordable housing for that grant application in the second year. Sustainability is so much more than environment and resilience, and I think the budget result or reflects that. I would love to have seen the waste moved forward because recycling on Water Street is always an issue, but we can't always have everything all at once. But I do appreciate them projecting it out.
I do object to the $10,000 for legal services. I think that's a pretty vague term for what they're wanting, being, want to use that money for, and $10,000 is an awful lot.
Once again, that's what they would estimate. Anytime they would be going for legal services, they would be coming before the council for approval to do so.
And I appreciate that clarification, but then I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question for John too, to what extent is the wording on this potentially misleading either to the public or legally? Is this something that we should more just be receiving than approving if we're not actually saying, yeah, we're dedicated to spending this money? Could you, could you give us advice on that?
If you approve, if you approve it, you're not obligated to spend it or approve each request for spending. However, at the same time, I think it provides a cap for what the Sustainability Commission, so they shouldn't be certainly spending over it, and they shouldn't be spending over the amount that's allocated for each line item.
Then I, so then I would actually say we shouldn't approve it, but only because for waste infrastructure, that right there, I think the reason it says zero was again because they weren't sure what would be headed. So they've talked to Smith about recycling containers, and they know that they've already, I mean, they've already done work on waste, they just didn't know what to put there. So, and actually, I'm curious because I'm like, wait, is this the last one you got? Because I felt like they did put some things in for waste.
This is the last one I remember getting.
I feel, there's a, there's a, there's a different one.
But I kind of agree also with the fact that I was a little concerned about the wordage, if you are approving a budget, you're approving their budget, and that's the money they suspended.
Yeah.
It really was more, I think the council was looking for guidelines.
Yeah, to the extent that we didn't communicate very well, you know, that's on us, but I would characterize our conversation as being more interested in knowing what, what hopes they had for the money, and we got a good list, I think. But I don't, I don't want to give the impression that, that the council in approving, you know, this budget is, is sort of saying, yeah, we're committed to spending all this money, I want to make sure that we don't give that impression.
And something I'm not clear about, before any of this money goes out, is there any control, does it come to the city clerk's office?
No, that's, it comes back here.
But it doesn't come back to the council?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Well, then there is a control.
So that's why, I don't think we need to approve the budget. I think that the notion behind the budget was that the Sustainability Commission would let the council have an understanding of where the priorities were and what, what things were happening so that we had an idea of how much money maybe there was in terms of other things that might come to our feet and our table, right?
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I would say that the label of it is the Sustainability Commission estimated budget speaks to, they are now letting us know what their estimates are. So I think we should accept this estimated budget and thank them for putting it before us.
Okay, so for, from my understanding, you know, it was not on the agenda at our last meeting, because when I got it, I didn't realize that they wanted it to come to council. And after that meeting, I had a few comments that, how come that wasn't on the council agenda for approval? Which is why it's on here tonight.
Right.
We had, we had stated previously how we were working with that.
Right, it has already gone through council last.
No, the council's never seen this budget before.
Before, that, that any request for actual expenditure has to come back to council.
But we had, we had asked, but we had asked them to create a budget so we had an idea of what things they were thinking. And I, and I do think the Purple Air Sensors was why it was asked, because they want approval to purchase those air sensors.
Right, and that's why that's on here too, but I understood they also wanted, wanted the budget on here. Now, if that's not accurate, I mean.
No, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a sense that we're all grateful for the sense of what, you know, they're hoping for, or what their plans might be, and I feel like we're also all in agreement that, that in approving this or whatever, we wouldn't necessarily be authorizing them to spend the money without coming before us with each item. And I share Steve Luce's sentiment that the best way to, to sort of realize that as a body is to accept with gratitude. Is there a way that we can do that tonight, or would that have to be on a future agenda?
Well, no, it's on the agenda. I think you can do that, and I think maybe your, the wordage you use, accepting versus approving is a big difference in that, in that verbiage.
But since there's a, is there a resolution?
No.
No, it's just a motion.
Well, I mean, no one's made the motion yet, right?
I can make one more comment about the budget. You were just about, I want to address Kirk's concern with legal fees. Do you think when you look at what we tasked the MEU task group to do, one of the first things that we asked them to do was to address the IO utilities request from the city that we provide some type of statement to the IO utilities board about the MEU process? So that does require some of John's oversight, probably somebody else's oversight. So we need to be able to access legal counsel in order to be able to communicate with the IO utility board. This isn't about going for an MEU, this is just about what the, the utility board had asked us after our last.
And if they needed to spend that, they would be coming before the city.
Of course, they would be coming before us, yep.
So it looks like we're, are you clear on your recommend, your motion then?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Sure, that'd be great.
I move that we accept with gratitude the proposed fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22 Sustainability Commission budget.
Estimated budget.
Thank you, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Second.
The motion made by Zittagrun, second by Hadley. Any further discussion?
Do you need the language for that, Wanda? Do you want me to say it again?
Okay, I just want to confirm that I got the language, because I didn't quite understand that little exchange at the end, that you are, it's a motion to accept with gratitude the fiscal 21 and fiscal 22 Sustainability Commission.
Estimated budget.
Estimated budget. Okay.
And I am grateful, they probably put a lot of work into this.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Roll call.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Chisel.
Okay. And then there is a request, consider approval of the purchase of two Purple Air PA 11 SD air sensors at $279 plus shipping.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the two air sensors.
Luce would second.
Motion made by Hadley, second by Luce. Motion made by Hadley, second by Luce. Just information, because I'd been listening to that, Luther College is buying two sensors in this project for being able to test air quality, and their suggestion was to be that the city would buy two also that would go along with the project.
Yep, and these will measure air quality in real time in Decorah, and I do believe we'll have, I mean, it'll be part of the communication plan to have access, that people can access the air quality information publicly, hopefully on our website, which is why we need to think about a communication plan, so we can do these things.
And just a nod, a nod posthumously to Eric Brant, who passed away a year ago, who was very instrumental in making me, at least personally, aware of the air quality issues in Decorah, and was an early advocate for this. So here's to you.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Okay. Consider approval of amending Article 11, Section 4 and 7 of the Decorah Volunteer Fire Department Constitution, amending residency requirements, and new member qualifications. We would like to give information on the...
Can we, oh, okay. They would like to see their current reading in those bylaws are, for membership, are, number one, be a U.S. citizen, number two, be at least 18 years of age and less than 56, three, have a high school diploma or high school equivalency, and four, a valid driver's license and be able to insure a vehicle. They would like that language to say, be at least 18 years of age, be able to legally work in the United States, have a high school diploma or high school equivalency, and have a valid driver's license and be able to insure a vehicle. Can we, do you think, can they just tell us about the amendments that they'd like, or?
Sure.
Sure.
Hello?
Just state your name, your address.
Yes, Steve Smith, 606 Franklin Street. I am also the Decorah Volunteer President, Fire Department President, not the Volunteer President. It's a big job. So yes, as Wanda said, we're asking currently on, I believe that is Amendment 4, is that correct?
That is...
Or Article 4, or Section 4?
Article 11, Sections 4 and 7 are what you're asking to have amended, yep.
And one has to do with eligibility based on mainly age and some other issues. We are, we have already submitted to the council changes that we would like to make, and these are those changes. We're just asking for them to be put in a little sooner than we think can happen for a full Constitution or bylaws article or vote. So, yeah, so it was recommended that we remove the 56, says I mean, and also we are, have a 20, we have 18 in our bylaws. The city code says 21. This kind of goes along with number 12 on your, or excuse me, number 11 on your item. So the city code says 21 to 56. Our bylaws say 18, and must have applied for membership by age 56. Not, so, so we have some instances where we have some members who will be, and we have had members forced off because of this 56 rule. It's been suggested by ICAP lawyers that that rule be changed due to age discrimination. So the other changes to those line items, the U.S. citizen and, was there another one?
Driver's license, no.
What, 18 to 21?
18.
18, yeah. Those are what are coming down the road, so I figured, why not just add them tonight?
I'd make a motion approving the amendment of Article 11, Section 4 and 7.
Okay.
Luce would second.
Do you want to just touch real quickly on the residency piece?
The residency currently states a four-mile radius of the station, and the residency requirement, we'd like to change, just to allow special exceptions based on a person's special circumstances. You know, if you work within Decorah 40 hours a week and are able, through your employer, to respond to calls Monday through Friday, nine to five, that is a very valuable thing for us. So if you live 10 miles out and you can still make a call during those times, we would welcome that with open arms. So that's the reason for that. And that would go to the investigating committee. Our investigating committee would then recommend a person outside the natural four-mile limit. The four-mile there is there, so we're not poaching from other departments, or getting people who just want to be on our department for whatever reason. So this, that's the reason for that residency change.
And a nod to Dan Voss for bringing it to our attention as well.
Right, and Dan Voss is soon to turn 56. Happy birthday, soon, Dan. So this is, he's the first in a series of, over the next few years, a series of forced retirements that are coming, so.
So, I mean, your motion still works.
Yep.
I just thought you might have to know what the other pieces of that was.
Second. Oh, second.
Luce actually seconded it.
Oh. I'll third.
Right, Steve?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, motion made by Hadley, seconded by Luce. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Hold on, Randy's got some more.
Sorry.
You said that if you work in town here 40 hours a week, that somebody from Kelmer, that's a member of their department, have you guys ever tried to get together with county departments and have a, call it a home residence and a work residence, to where you would have bunker gear at the different sites, to where we could kind of meld the departments?
We have not. We do have a monthly county fire meeting. It's monthly, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our department that works out of town in those communities, so if they could run to Kelmer and get bunker gear.
Sure.
And I know we have mutual aid that goes almost automatically, because everybody's struggling with numbers.
The only thing that might be a sticking point on that is, we have requirements for training that other departments may not have. And so we would, you know, part of the investigating committee would say, all right, you work in town 40 hours a week, we expect you to be at our training, like you're a member of our department. There won't be any, you know, just because you work 40 hours a week and can come, we're not going to give them any other sort of special treatment. They're going to be expected to show up, do the work, contribute to the department. But yeah, I think that's a valid idea, for sure.
You know, start maybe blending more toward a countywide training facility for everybody to benefit by it in the future.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hadley.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Chisel.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
Okay, consider ordinance 1273, amending Chapter 2.14.050 of the Decorah City Code regarding the age qualifications for volunteers firefighters, first reading.
There again, that just changes the age, so it matches their constitution.
Nice.
So.
I move that we pass approval of ordinance, now I just lost it, 1273, amending Chapter 214.050 of the Decorah City Code regarding age of firemen.
Motion made by Neil.
Luce would second.
Second by Zittagrun. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Neil.
Aye.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
Chisel.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
I also, can we, I make a motion that we waive the second and third, given that the impacted parties are here. It was unanimous.
And move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Motion made by Neil to waive second and third and move to adopt.
Luce will second.
Seconded by Luce. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know for our full-time firefighters, they age out at a certain age, correct?
Yep, 66.
They do, because of employment rules, I believe.
Okay, is there any state law regarding volunteers?
I don't, I don't believe there is.
I don't think so.
No.
Not that I know of.
Just for professional firefighters, not for volunteers.
Right, but I was just wondering if there's any for volunteers.
Nope.
Can we waive and adopt both of these?
Yeah, that's what...
Pardon?
Was that the?
Oh, that's the motion.
The motion is...
There's a motion and second.
To waive and adopt both?
Yep.
Well, you adapted the one. Oh, you mean...
Oh, one's an amendment, one's an ordinance. Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call?
Neil.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you very much for the work. Consider ordinance, whoops, wrong one, hang on. Oh, they was right. Son of a gun, what the heck. Consider ordinance 1275, rescinding the mask mandate, first reading.
I would move to approve ordinance 1275, rescinding the mask mandate, and follow the CDC guidelines.
I'd have to agree with Randy. There's also, I saw Des Moines rescinded theirs, as did Cedar Rapids, I believe, and I think Ames is possibly doing theirs tonight as well, so.
So we've got Randy making the motion, Andy the second. Discussion.
Just in terms of following the CDC guidelines, the CDC guidelines, I think it's just important that we are clear with the community, refer to vaccinated people feeling, being safe, going on masks in the community, indoors, in almost every activity. Unvaccinated people are still encouraged by the CDC to wear a mask. The director of the CDC has been pretty clear that local leaders like us should not, people who set policy, should not instantly lift mask ordinances, they should consider their local case counts, they should consider whether they can differentiate between people who've been vaccinated and people who've not, and they should consider the vaccination rate in the community. Their messaging says what we were saying last week, or last meeting, when we passed our benchmark, which is that the vaccines work, and they're the way out of this. If a community is not sufficiently vaccinated at a high rate, there will be flare-ups again this fall with the flu season. If our community continues to have a large proportion of people who choose not to get vaccinated, there will be bad results. People will get sick. We might have to reconsider invoking a mask mandate if case counts go up, or at least I would push that we consider that. And I don't want to see that happen. So I really hope that people don't see this if we choose to rescind the mask mandate, as the city council's saying coronavirus is over, everyone go back to normal. If you're not vaccinated, the CDC says you're supposed to keep wearing a mask, so that you don't make other people sick, some of whom might die because of it. And I think that it's just important that we be pretty clear about that.
I did, just a note too, I have been attending the public health meetings, and one of our other criteria was when we had enough vaccine for all people that want to be vaccinated was one of the considerations, and they have been working hard at using the number of doses that they have, but they are seeing that they have more vaccine than what they had. But now they have been working with Luther. They did another stop, I think last week, where they had people could come in for free. So they're continuing to support and get information out. They're starting to look at what it would look like for when vaccinations from 16 to 18. And so they're continuing to work with it, but I just wanted to pass it on in conjunction with this.
Mayor, was there any report regarding the $11,000 in Winship County?
You made...
Benchmark that we passed last time?
No, there wasn't. I know that there was questions as to why the city had used the county's numbers, but it was clear, I made it clear, the fact that that was the only benchmark we could use, and that we had used that benchmark as far as the city was concerned, too. They did not give a number. I think they were encouraging people, let's say who'd been vaccinated outside of the state or outside of the county, to contact their medical providers, and let them know, so that they can get accurate readings as much as they can. But that, it has been very hard to be able to tell exactly how many had been vaccinated also. Any further discussion?
No, I guess I would also just like to, Steve said it very eloquently and well, so I will echo what he said. I do think that we are in the Midwest sometimes last to get things, so that means variants are on their way. So I can't stress, I just want to reiterate this idea of getting vaxxed. It's really our only way out of this, and even though, you know, we're all happy to stop wearing our masks, we can only do it if everyone gets vaccinated. And as someone who's got a friend right now who's undergoing chemotherapy and can't get vaccinated, I certainly hope that anyone who isn't vaccinated walking around our community is wearing a mask.
Not to mention all of our kids who can't get it yet.
Exactly, yep.
And to that point, I would hope that we would take the energy and focus that we've had, encouraging vaccinations and the mask mandate, and work toward youth vaccination this summer, in conjunction with public health and our other community partners, to continue to increase the vaccination rate in our community. It's important, and the case counts at school show that the masks worked, and hopefully the vaccination rate among the youth population will be such that we don't have to worry about it in the fall when they return.
And actually, you brought that up. I do want to commend the school district. The school district is going to continue to have their mask mandate until the end of school. I think as a community, we should encourage and support that, as parents and community members going into the school, to make sure that we are also honoring the school districts, following of the CDC guidelines that say that schools should still remain masked, so.
I just have a quick question. Did anyone at the meeting you were at, Lorraine, talk about the response from people who may have received their vaccination out of state?
I think that there had been reported, people reported that they did out of state, but I believe that they also could call their provider, but also call the public health, so that they have, but they live in the city, that they should let them know, so that they can be counted out with you. Okay, and you had one more?
I just wanted to say, you know, sitting here looking out at a roomful of firefighters who give a great deal of themselves personally to protect their community, even though it's very unlikely that any of their houses will ever burn down, we're asking you, or at least I am, I'm asking you, even if there's a very low likelihood of a bad result of coronavirus, to do something incredibly simple to make your community stronger and more resilient and protected. If you're out there in public and you're on the fence, call your doctor. Your doctor will be happy to talk with you. Your doctor probably knows more about this than, you know, your friend from high school who posted the Facebook meme. So I'm just, this is the way out of here. I want Decorah to never have to wear a mask again after this fall. I'd hate to see it have to happen. Vaccines are the way to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate all the discussion, and I'll go to roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Zittagrun.
Aye.
I would also move to waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
We have a motion from Chisel to waive the second and third reading and adopt, second by... Second by Zitogun. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify, this is not taking effect until the publication. Is that accurate?
Correct.
I mean, legally, there's still a mask mandate in place until it's published in the newspaper.
The latest would be.
Till May twentieth.
Get out and enforce that, billionaire.
Hadley, first ticket written.
May, actually, that would be May, according to the way we have to register. I mean, it would be the twenty-seventh, right? May twenty-seventh. Okay, roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Zitogun.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lou's.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay. Resolution thirty-one ninety-five amending the city's portion of the Winship multi-jurisdictional, jurisdictional, jurisdiccional, stay right? Plan twenty twenty.
Okay, so Sean Snyder from Emergency Management has been working with our departments. There is some Homeland Security money available for some needed projects that we have. So, he has been working with them to potentially submit some grant opportunities for those projects, but they need to be listed in that multi-jurisdiccional hazard plan. So, that is what this resolution does. It revises when you passed back in twenty twenty, and it adds purchase and installation of permanent generators at critical water and wastewater systems. Purchase and installation of permanent generators at critical city buildings for the EOC, Fire Rescue and Police, to maintain operations during electrical power loss. That would be at the library in the event we had to move the EOC. Evaluate storms, sewer infrastructure and deficiencies and improve them to reduce the potential for localized flooding. Basically, that's putting permanent flood pumps in the river. And then construct safe rooms for campgrounds and recreational areas. So, it would be a safe room at the campground. Okay, so these are, these are grants that we can opt out of at any time through the process, there is a fifteen percent, correct? Fifteen percent match for these funds. Now, I did sit in on a webinar today about the American Recovery Act monies that we're beginning. We can use those funds as our match for this, because this is FEMA money. So, it is something we can use some of that money for, should we choose to, as that match, if that, if we want to. And as of right now, that money is still only available for water, sewer, and broadband amongst a couple, a few other things that we probably, and I'll let you know what that is later, but, that we probably wouldn't use it for, but those are, those are the highlights of what, what we can use them for.
What was the timeline on this?
On this? Chopper, do you know what the timeline is?
I think they wanted to submit it rather quickly because the Homeland Security.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I meant like, when are we going to find out if we are awarded? If we need to use the match?
Lou's would like to move resolution thirty-one ninety-five.
Hold your horses, Steve.
A second.
Um, what would the price tag be, Chopper? Let's just say hypothetically, all these are approved. What was the, and I didn't look, I mean, I couldn't find it in drop box, but wasn't like the generator alone, like a hundred thousand dollars or?
So, there's several pieces. For example, the water generators equal about two hundred and seventeen thousand, let's just say two twenty. The one at the library, it's a large one as well. That one is about, well, Todd's is seven generators, remember correctly, right? Six generators. The one at the library, they do two hundred and ten, depending on size and placement. The pumps that you were working on equal.
Yeah, they're like four hundred thousand apiece, right?
Is there a microphone there, Chopper?
I mean, you have to repeat what you just said, too, please.
All right, so the Water Department, six generators equal about two hundred and twenty thousand. The library between eighty and a hundred and seven, I think. The pumps for the river are about seven fifty, eight hundred thousand. Is that what you're worth guessing? And Andy, where's Andy? What's the storm shelter, rough price?
Potential cost?
Yep. He doesn't have an exact price, he's just.
But these are, right, but to be clear, I think that the grant only would cover the storm shelter.
Right, and these are all potential, we just need to have them in the grant in order to even fund them if we could.
That's correct.
Do you even have a possibility? Like I said, we can opt out at any time.
And we can do some, but not all.
That's correct.
Correct.
Was there a second to Steve's motion?
No, I'll second.
Motion was made by Lou's, seconded by Neil.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Thanks for all the work, staff. It looks like a lot.
Roll call.
Lou's.
Aye.
Neil.
Yeah.
Hadley.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Zitogun.
Aye.
And a big thanks to Sean Snyder, because he's really carrying the weight on all of this, so.
He has been excellent in being able to seek funding and grants to the advantage of the city, but also the county, and I really appreciated any other work that was done from the departments, too. That's what working together is about. Okay, board and community applications. We have two openings for civil service. I know I just received an application, and I know, I believe there's another one coming in. And then we have an open position on the Board of Adjustment. Okay, city manager, department head, council reports.
Okay, just very quickly, we've had a small ad hoc committee consisting of Mayor Barowski, Jeff Odie, Zach Current, Mike Ashbacker, and myself to, to review and study some of the architecting firms and engineering firms for the new fire station, potential new fire station. And so, we've been meeting about that and meeting with those groups. We would like to have a meeting with Public Safety so that we can go over what our recommendation to the council is going to be, and, and then meet with the Rural Fire, because we missed that meeting back in early April. So, I tried to call Dan Beard today, but I, I didn't get him. He didn't answer, and he didn't call back, so I don't have kind of a definitive time that maybe the farmers will be done and able to come. So, as soon as I have that, maybe we can get together and set a meeting to discuss that. The committee would really like to have it on the agenda for June seventh. So, if we could try to have a meeting about that and with them before, before that, it would be great. You mean before June seventh? Before June seventh. And I think, well, I think the farmers are kind of wrapping up. It's been pretty, it's been pretty nice weather for them, so I'm hoping that maybe they'd be able to within another week or two.
Okay, for me, it needs to be after the twenty-ninth, so.
After the twenty-ninth, okay. Well, that can still meet the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's extremely important that we go through that Public Safety Commission so that everybody gets a lot of information, so. And being able to provide information to the council.
Right, well, and I, so, and I was just trying to kill two birds.
Yeah, and it would be good to have, just be good to have some of the information we talked about for Rural Fire meeting prior to that.
Right, and I, and I've put some of that stuff together.
Okay.
So, but I thought, well, rather than Public Safety having to get together twice, if you can do it all in one meeting, it would be probably beneficial for everybody, okay.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing from me, Mayor.
Anybody on the department end? I know that, Andy, I was happy to hear that swimming pool. You've got things lined up for that, including lifeguards. I know that wasn't there.
Should be good to go June first.
He said it should be go for the pool to open June first. I think they've got staffing for summer recreation. We actually have somebody in our department that has an anniversary coming up.
Oh, we do? Well, not, not in my department, but in the city.
In the city department.
In the city department, we have somebody who's going to be here thirty years.
Yes. Who is that?
Our chief of police.
Did you remember that, or have you been here? You've had so much fun with this, you forgot you've been here for thirty years?
I got started when you were seven.
I'm pretty sure you lie about your age. I just really can't quite figure this out.
Well, it's fun when that comes across my desk and you know somebody's been with us thirty years, so I appreciate all the work that you've done in the thirty years, so. Hey, anything else from departments to move to Chisel?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Carlson?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Zitogun?
Nothing.
Hadley?
Nothing.
Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
Neil?
Just congratulations to all the Luther graduates and upcoming Decora High School graduates. Maybe I'm a little biased right there, but happy graduation season, everybody.
I had, we will, if you remember, we had representatives from the city economic arena put, I met with the Winship County Development and Jobs, and we were going to be meeting regularly. So, Steph and I sent out, what Steph did, a schedule to be able to pull those people together again so we can keep on top of knowing what we're doing at the city, what they're doing at the county, and to keep that conversation going. I believe that is all I have. I'll look for a motion.
If I might.
Oh, I am so sorry, Steve, Lou's.
Just wanted to share, there's an Economic Development Committee after this meeting.
Hey, thanks, Steve.
And I do think, if council's willing, next meeting on June seventh, we could add back in our meeting, if you're vaccinated, take good times or wear a mask and come and have waffle fries.
All right.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.